I know.
On what?
You don't need to be the support system.
Not the road with the curbing, no.
We all rise please.
Good evening, everybody. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, the Board met in executive session to discuss the personnel matter. And as a result of that personnel matter discussion, I would like to make the motion that we appoint Sergeant Ziegler, Sergeant Charles Ziegler, to the position of Lieutenant in Doylestown Township Police Department.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
If you have any questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Congratulations, Officer Ziegler. He's here.
I literally just sent him out to pick up a picture. He's grabbing a picture for me.
Oh, no.
Thank you. Okay. Well, at the next meeting, we can prepare.
Now we can clap for him.
Did you have to wear it? At the next meeting, we'll have a swearing in. Chief?
Sarge, you just missed. They promoted you to lieutenant.
We'll have to do an agreement, too.
You're welcome, yes. After the, we decided that after the swearing in, that we'll work on the contract. Okay? All right. Yes, what? Am I doing something wrong?
Louder? Me and Stephanie.
Louder? All right. All right, what? All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation from Kids Castle, Joe Savadi. Thank you, Joe.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Jeff.
Joe Savadi, friends of Kids Castle, Chair of Assembly. And John Peterman is a fellow member. Supervisor liaison is Ryan Manning. And in addition to committee members, we also have many volunteers who continue to help with the ongoing Kids Castle project. Recently, Tina Masagiri joined us as a volunteer to help secure more financial sponsorships. Also, we have Lauren Sheehan, an original member of our committee, who has stated as a volunteer and continues to help. She also ran as a volunteer for our time when we had events. Recently, she got together with a volunteer for Santa's visit to Kids Castle as a member. And some of the volunteers who helped us are Michael Sheehan, Heather Rapp, who was an original member of the committee, John Rapp, Rachel Ford, another original member, Joe Ford, Rachel's mom, Miss, Mrs. Witt, Kelly Alder, an original member, Kevin Kane, a recent previous member of the committee. I'd also like to thank Matt Whiteford for helping us secure the C D West wire, and of course, the C D S, the C D West wire, saying parents should not hold events if they break. The Quanis Club. We also have many student volunteers from Central Park, so thank you to them. And from township, I'd like to thank Rick Shea, our township fire marshal, facilities manager, who secured the fire engine for Santa to ride along. Chief Logan for securing us a wonderfully kind and helpful police presence with Sergeant Sean Keane, who placed his lights, escorted the fire truck in, escorted Santa up, and stayed with him through the whole event. Took him back to 30 years ago, back to the North Pole, so he was very, very helpful. Also like to thank Brett from Township Group, who was very helpful in the entire event with setup and breakdown. David, Brett.
January 6th. January 6th. Yeah.
So we have many, many volunteers who helped us with ongoing phases, and we don't fault them to have the opportunity to use time, so I'd like to thank them all.
Thank you.
And now I have a short little video for everyone who watches, and I'll come back up. Anybody has questions?
Roll one down.
Move it there. Move it down.
Any color comment while we're working on those technical difficulties? Anyone here have a comment? Hearing none? We'll wait for the presentation.
If you can ask the board.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you. All right, next meeting of the Doylestown Township Supervisors will be on Tuesday, August 18th at 7:00 PM. The Doylestown Golf Outing, we are in need of a golfer, so if you have a foursome or you know a foursome that will play, it's a fun day. Of course, there are going to be some limitations on the party afterwards, but it's August 24th, 2020, Doylestown Country Club, and you can call me or contact administrative offices for any detail. And I think we start in the morning and we're done by late afternoon, so it's a fun day. And all the proceeds of this golf outing go to our park system, so it's a good event. It's not going to general fund, it's going to actual, actually to our park amenities, which, you know, are spectacular and we want to keep them as they are. And the last item to announce is leaf and yard waste recycling, the third Saturday of each month, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and you dump your stuff at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. And visit our website if you need more information. Okay. Can we go one?
Sure.
Are there, you've received these in your packet? Everyone had a chance to review them, I assume, the minutes from June 16th, 2020?
Yes.
I have corrections to the minutes. On page three, it says in the, end of the third paragraph, Ms. Lyons noted chokeholds are part of the township's, are part of the township in a lethal situation, instead of is a lethal situation. Further down, there's no, she asked the board, a board's approval of the, in the paragraph under Ms. Santasilia. That sentence has to be finished, I don't remember what it's supposed to be.
It's a resolution.
She asked the board's approval of the resolution. Thank you. Do you see where we're missing a word there? And then the next line is Ms. Mansion, and I think that, of course, is Ms. Mannion. And those are the only corrections I saw. Well, no, wrong, wrong, wrong. On page four, Ms. Mannion thanked Chief Logan and the police department. Ms. Logan stated his officers are the backbone of the department. I think we don't mean that. I think he means it, but he's not a Ms. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I have two other corrections.
Okay.
On page one, the paragraph before the announcement, again, it's Ms. Mansion and not Mannion.
Oh, I missed that one.
And on that page four, section C, it said, I believe it said June 30th, 2020? It should be July 31st, 2020, as far as extending the Hammerstein.
That's right.
Yeah. That's a biggie. Thanks. That's a big, thank you, that's a good catch. Okay. There's a motion, is there a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then there's some notes from the budget session, which was on June 16th as well, at 3:00. Have we had a chance to review them all?
Yes.
Any corrections? Questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minute notes from the budget work session on June 16th?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along then. Hey, Joe, whenever you're ready, let us know, okay? Solicitor. You good? All right, we'll pause. We'll pick it up with you.
Up, back to the recess. Ready for me?
Yes.
A small portion of Doylestown Township, basically off of Turk Road, is served by the Bucks County Water and Sew Authority, but the flows, I guess it's been over 10 years now, flow into Warrington Township. And Warminster Township Municipal Authority provides treatment services to Warrington, which is now owned by Bucks County Water and Sew Authority. So the Warminster Municipal Authority is asking this board to approve an industrial pre-treatment ordinance, which is a requirement because the treatment plant manages industrial pre-treatment, not that there's any area in Doylestown Township that has any industrial users that go to that location, but they're asking us to adopt the ordinance. It is consistent in most respects with the one we already have that relates to the Bucks County Water and Sew Authority portion of the township. So with your blessing, I would like to prepare the ordinance and authorize it for a future meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Garten, if you could just, I believe you just clarified it, but I was unclear from our packing information. This is because some of our water runoff goes into Warrington, and that's why they're requesting it.
Yes, whoever, whatever sanitary sewer flow goes from anywhere to a treatment plant, that's why they want them, the EPA requires it, to be an industrial pre-treatment ordinance in the municipality where the flow is emanating.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor of the question?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeff. Anything else, Jeff?
No, not at this point.
Chuck and I have been working together for the last 17 years, and as we, time moves on, I don't think you're going to regret one moment of taking that action tonight. He's truly been a blessing to work with.
Chief, move your mic a little closer.
My mic?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Closer to your mic.
Is it working?
Yeah, we just.
All right. In addition to that, a follow-up on last month's comments, as I thought would take place, Governor Wolf had signed into, two bills into law in regards to police reform. House Bill 1841 amended Title 44, which is Law and Justice, and added Chapter 73 to the title, which basically governs what we're now required to do for background investigations. It's basically opening up and making it difficult for police officers, for an agency hiring a police officer not to be able to recover information that may have been detrimental or prevent that person from actually working for us. It will, there will be certain things along the way that might make it difficult, such as actions where law enforcement agencies enter into a stipulated agreement with an employee in lieu of termination. So those things are also covered in there. So there's certain actions that will help us cross those hurdles if we come across one. It makes it harder for the, a problem employee to hide behind a, an agreement. Also, Title 4 was amended, adding Chapter 72, which is mental health evaluations for an officer who's involved in some type of post-traumatic stress. It could be as far as a use of force incident, whether he or she may have been involved in a deadly force incident. It's important to understand that we have already covered that in our policies. It's covered in one of our general orders in our standing operating procedures, that exactly what was outlined in that law, we've already do. We've been doing it for at least the last eight or nine years. So that's not going to affect us at all. Bill 1910 also stipulated that, as we were talking about training and stuff last week, what's being covered and what's not being covered. As luck would have it, within the next day, I think I remember seeing something come across the governor's desk, and then this bill was passed, and the certain items will be now covered in MOPEx annual training. Those things particularly, I think we discussed, de-escalation training, harm and reduction techniques, community and cultural awareness, implicit bias, procedural justice, and reconciliation techniques. So all these things are going to become mandated through MOPEx and our in-service training beginning in 2021. So I think as far as a police department, we're going to be on board. As luck would have it, in March, prior to this whole situation's coming to light, we had intended to put our entire department through de-escalation training through DIVIT. That training was canceled due to COVID, but we're going to try and get that rescheduled prior to the end of the year, even before 2021 mandates, because that training will be eight hours versus probably a two-hour block in our MOPEx training. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed. We're kind of, we're still ahead of the curve, we're good, we're on par, so nothing that the, the police reforms things that Governor Wolf signed into law are not going to really affect us. It's just reemphasizing that we're, we're doing the right things here in Doylestown. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. And yeah, we know that this department has been, you know, a trendsetter throughout the Commonwealth and being, you know, excellent in its policing. So, and what's coming out with the governor, stuff, as you said, we've already been doing. So that's good to, that's good, it's good to hear. Thank you. How are we doing back there? Thank you. I, a birdie, birdie suggested that you might be wanting to reconfigure the committee somewhat.
Excuse me?
You want to reconfigure the committee somewhat?
Yes, we've been operating for the last six years with a two to three-member committee, and it's been working quite well for us. So I didn't, I wasn't going to bring it up.
I'm sorry, I brought it up. So, I brought it up, don't worry about it. So what is, what is our committee, what is, what is the number that we're supposed to have? Five? All right, so you would like to have it three?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll do a resolution for your next meeting, reducing it from five to three.
Okay, and then we'll pass on it then.
And we also have someone who is working with us now as a volunteer, and if they're interested, we'll present it to our liaison and ask the board to make them the final member.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The timing of stuff went off a little bit, but I do have some additional people to thank, so. I'd like to thank Dave Tomco, our Township Director of Operations, and his entire crew, who now, we would not have been able to complete this project. Karen Sweeney, our Township Director of Park and Recreation, for her 24 years of direct support of Kids Castle. Stephanie Mason, our Township Manager, for her many, many years of support. Township Park Superintendent Chris Mason. All the Township staff and administration who are giving up their time to help. Our Board of Supervisors, who have greatly supported Kids Castle from the very beginning through today. And to those of you who are relatively new with the Board, we ask you for your support going forward. And last but not least, to all our donors and supporters who just keep giving and making Kids Castle possible for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. Well done. Did an amazing job.
I have a quick question. Your next meeting's coming up soon? Is that, your next meeting's coming up soon, in another few days?
Monday.
On Monday, okay. And that's until 30 here?
Yes. If you have something in your bag that has the information about work we're doing going forward, or that's something that's planned for recently, if you have any questions at some other point, just get ahold of me. All right?
All right, thank you.
It's a shame that kids turn into adults, isn't it?
Yeah. Only they could stay little.
Mr. Zelvetti, I have just one additional question for you, real quick. I just have one additional question for you, if you don't mind. With the next phase coming up, I also know we are getting close to the lifespan of the castle itself. Do you have an idea about how much longer till we need to start addressing the future of the castle structure?
Yeah, sure. That's something that I think we take on with Dave in reference to that. It is to, as you see, the information that you have in the packet, our plan is to leave the space open to this entire area. So our best idea is to continue with the port in place in this area, at this area. This will remain as it was built, so when there comes a time when something has to become with the castle itself, the township will still be able to get in there and work on the structure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
Okay. Trying to take a little bit off of Dave's plate for once. We had three bids opened up last Tuesday, the 14th, two of which were for the 2020 road program. This is a rebid of the program where the curbing and the paving for the Pebblewood, Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge development being split into two separate bids, one for paving, one for curbing. For paving, or for curbing, I'm sorry, we had four bids. The apparent low bidder was Monster Paving, came in with alternatives. It was almost an equal split between base bid and alternatives. It was $921,818.30. The alternatives are heavy because of the fact that we are looking at trying to schedule around the sewer being done, the water being done, so there's a lot of different variables in the development right now. But the low bidder was, apparent low bidder was Monster Paving. They are actually disqualified due to not being PennDOT pre-qualified. The next low bidder was Reams Town Excavating and Concrete. Their total came in at $1,218,766.00. There's about a $300,000 difference between low bidder and the next apparent low bidder. So we're going to evaluate that going forward. We're not going to make a recommendation for award tonight. We're going to evaluate the bids, and we'll come back to the next meeting with, with our suggestion and recommendation. For the paving, pardon me, there were six bids. The apparent low bidder is James D. Morrissey, with a total, including alternates, of $387,328.80. Again, along with the curbing, we're going to evaluate all of it, especially trying to follow up with Bucks County Water and Sew Authority to find out about where they are with their sewer installations and the plan for the water, so we'll find out a better idea of what alternatives, alternates we may be able to include. So we're going to evaluate both of those concurrently and come back to you with a recommendation. And the third bid was for the port in place surfacing at Turk Park. There was only one bid for that, and it was, the apparent low bidder was Recreation Resource USA, and that bid came in at $87,602.43, including minor alternates. I think the base was in the $70,000 range. My understanding is that the budget for that was a little bit less than that.
Correct.
So again, we're going to evaluate that based on the budget and the fact that it was only one bid to determine how we want to progress going forward. So just want to give you those updates on those three bids and where they stand today.
Okay. Thank you. No action now?
What's that?
No action now?
No action.
Okay. Dave Tomco.
Okay. Got a number of items here, so bear with me. I'll go through it as quickly as I can. The first, we are back to the Central Park lighting award recommendation. After the last meeting, as you recall, I made a recommendation, you'd award that the purchase of the fixtures and the poles to Turtle and Hughes Incorporated out of Linden, New Jersey, in a total of $95,904. After reviewing that quote and preparing to issue notice to proceed in an award, notice of award, I realized that they had, had a unapproved alternate bid item for all the fixtures and the poles. Basically, they supplied, they specked another supplier for that material that was not consistent with the lighting that we have for this parking lot area, this building, as we want to keep consistent. So basically, we have to go back, and I'm asking you to, I guess, to reject that bid, if we have to do that, Mr. Garten, is reject that bid?
You have to rescind, if you awarded, rescind the approval.
Okay.
What did we do? Did we?
I think, I think Dave is saying you awarded at the last meeting, correct?
Correct. The board made a word recommendation.
You need a motion to rescind the prior approval in favor of Turtle and Hughes, Inc.
No, Turtle and Hughes would be rescinded.
No, no, you're going to rescind that award.
I got it.
Right.
I think that was.
I'll make a motion to rescind the proposal from Turtle and Hughes and approve a proposal from Denny Electric.
Okay, but before we go, I just want to make you aware that the quote for Denny Electric is, is $132,950, which takes our entire project budget, as I reported last time, we were like $32,000 and change below budget. This takes us $620 over budget. So I just want to make you aware that there's a significant cost difference. But if you notice, that the three bidders that, that also are supplying the same material are within, you know, the second to the third is, is, or the first to the third with the new, or proper spec'd material is only less than $3,000 difference. Okay? So I'm asking for your approval for, to award to Denny Electric Supply.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Right. The motion was to rescind Turtle and approve Denny. Right? All in question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Can I just ask a quick question on that, Mr. Tomco? How is, how did we catch that after we voted on it prior to before? Was that additional information came out, or was it just an oversight? I'm not trying to like put you on the spot or anything, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. No, honestly, when I looked at the quote, and you know, there's, it's a bunch of numbers. And the quote is just, you know, a series of numbers, and honestly... honestly, it was an oversight that I didn't match them up exactly, because I saw that the serial numbers were the same, when I actually got done doing the work. And then I actually looked at the, they also submitted cut sheets of the product, which we were to approve. And when I started looking at the, the cut sheets of the product, against the ones that I had from the manufacturer for this building and the other distributor, I realized that it was not for the, the proper product. So oversight of that, I didn't look at the numbers. Again, it was my fault, because I didn't look at the details of it. Okay? So it was an oversight, unfortunately.
But it is standard that you would go through it a second time after?
I looked at it, actually sent, actually the, the second, when I actually realized the mistake, I sent it over to, to Emily, now with Gilmore, and I asked her to double check, to make sure that I wasn't wrong the second time. I said, please check this to make sure, and they confirmed. She confirmed that it was not the proper spec'd item, and that, that Denny Electric did specify, as well as Tri-County and From Electric did specify the proper material. And the bids were correct. And you could see that, I should have known by the price, straight up. Thank you.
I'm glad you caught it.
Thanks, sorry about that. I apologize that, that error got across there. Okay? Thank you very much. Allow me to keep going.
Yes, please.
Bids were received for the 2021 fuel bids. Basically, Upper Southampton, on behalf of the Bucks County Consortium, put out the, the fuel bid for us. And I'm asking your recommendation for award that we would select for our regular unleaded fuel, our ultra-sulfur diesel fuel, and the winter additive, that we award the contract for the 2020 fuel bids, or 2020, 21 fuel bids to Riggins Incorporated. If you'd like, if I need me to, I'll read off the dollars and cents, what the numbers are, if not, uh-
Riggins is doing all the fuel products, gas, diesel, and propane?
No, Riggins is doing the unleaded gas, ultra, the diesel, and the winter additive that goes into the diesel.
Everything but propane?
Correct, everything but propane.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I'm asking you to award the fuel to Riggins, and the propane to Suburban Propane.
Alright.
So there's two, there's two awards that are separate from each other.
Let's do them separately. Is there a motion to award the, the gas products to, was it Riggins, Inc. in Vineland, New Jersey?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Riggins has the gas and gas products. And then, is there a motion to award Suburban Propane, the propane contract?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Tree pruning?
Okay, 2020 tree pruning and takedown award recommendation. We, on July 15th, we received four bids for the, the tree pruning, for tree takedown in the Township Rights of Way Parkslands, open space and trails. Of those four bids, Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn is the low bidder, which includes the base bid, plus add alternates one, two, three, four, and five, for a total of $115,000. I'm asking for you to award to Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn.
Alright, is there a motion to approve Joseph McElvein, or McElvein Tree and Lawn Contractor for 2021?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. More?
Last item is the Edison Road Abutment Repairs. Edison Road Abutment is, is basically the old stone wall that was part of the Seven Arch Bridge, that went over, then to Shamney Creek, from Turk Road, washed out some many years ago. Three bids were received on July 7th for the work. It was advertised for, for the repairs, which is basically repointing of, of that entire stone wall, as well as some additional work. I'm asking for your award to Mar Allen Concrete Products for the base bid, plus the add alternate totaling $73,601 for that work.
Alright, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, award to Mar Allen Concrete Products, $73,601. Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bear with me, and forgive me, I made a mistake. I misspoke. On the McElvein Tree and Lawn, I, I stated the motion as a 2021 tree pruning, and it's 2020.
Correct, 2020.
So can we correct the minutes to reflect it's 2020, not 2021? Is everyone in agreement? Thank you.
Hi Dad.
Alright, next item. Edison Road Abutment Repairs.
Copy here.
But, did I miss something? Didn't we just? We did that already?
Yeah, we just did that one.
We just did that. Alright, copy of your recommendation.
Yes. In your packet, you have a memo from Ken Wallace, who is also here in the audience this evening. This is for the various copy machines, and our large format wide printer that we have. We are recommending staying with the state cooperative purchasing through Co-Stars, with Heritage Business Systems, for the admin, police, finance copiers, and also for the Canon America, to handle the wide format printer. And you have all the details from Mr. Wallace in your packet.
Discussion? Anybody?
I just have one question, this is just from my own background. Why do we lease our equipment instead of purchasing copying machines? Is it just more economical long-term that way?
It is. They're on the state cooperative, and we're doing this every like three years, which mountain, the technology just changes so quickly, that it makes sense. The wide format printer, the one we've had, we've had for a very, very long time, and we just, they no longer make the parts for it. That one we'll keep for a long time. But the, the one, the other copy machines, they're changing constantly, and so it's less expensive just to lease them, and-
Okay, thank you.
So what do, I mean, I'm like, this is, you, you want us to approve leasing of this machine?
Mm-hmm, of the equipment.
Machine and equipment?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the leasing of the machine and equipment through Heritage Business System? No? Yes, that one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else there? No?
Um, no.
Okay, unfinished business. Draft resolution from, proposed Juneteenth resolution from 6/16.
You missed public, you missed supervisors and public hearing.
Oh my gosh, I dropped two, two things. I'm so sorry. I'm having a hard time seeing. It's really dark in here, like really. Alright, never mind. Preserve at Burke Farm, sorry, we're having a public hearing on that.
You missed your supervisor comments.
Been up too long today. 2020 Board of Supervisor Skylines, Barbara Lyons. We had a general discussion about this, you know, in the back room. We took no action, so I don't even think we need to address it again. I'm gonna ask, Jen, you have anything? Do you want to speak to? Nope. Danz?
Nope, I'm just here to represent all of our constituents.
Okay. Dan?
Uh, yeah, I just have two quick updates, one from our EAC. The native plant gardening is back underway, behind Central Park, back by the rear entrance. And it's been, you know, suspended a little bit because of the COVID, but we're back doing that. One request, though, is that some people are really enjoying the native plant garden so much, they're removing plants from the native plant garden.
Oh no.
And while we appreciate your interest in native plant gardening, please don't do that. If, if you were interested more in native plants for your own home, the EAC has several great resources that we can provide for you for that. And you're, of course, you're welcome to join us in person to learn how to care for those plants. The last update I have is just on the state of the water and sewer projects in the Wood Ridge, Pebble Ridge area. I know there's a lot of construction going on in that area, and people are waiting anxiously to get their roads paved, in places that's passed by. And I just wanted to reinforce that, in our meetings, in the Water and Sewer Board, and in the Subcommittee Board, that we're waiting for Bucks County Water and Sewer to finish up the, mostly the drilling process for getting sewers in, in that area. It has been slow-going because of the geology of the area, due to extremely hard rock. So we are slightly behind in that timeline-wise because of that. But as soon as Bucks County Water and Sewer is complete with their project, the DTMA will be coming through to specific areas, to put in water lines that have requested it. That is estimated to take about a month. And once that is complete, then our crews will be following behind to finish paving. Right now, we're looking to get done by the fall. Again, this is going to be dependent on how installation the sewers go, but I just want to give our residents in that community a heads-up of what's happening, and to let you know that there is a light at the end of the tunnel for getting your roads back together.
Dan, I have a question about the EAC and the pilfering of the need of plants. Do they have to put signs up and stuff like that, don't take the plants?
They, the EAC does not want to do that at this stage, because they try to keep it as sign minimal as possible back there. This is the first we've been aware of it. And I was like, was it deer? No, these were dug up, so.
Ah, that's right.
Yeah. So right now, we're just asking, please don't do that, and hopefully it won't become a thing.
Okay. An item for the next newsletter, perhaps? Alright, thank you. Brian, do you have anything?
I just have one update for tonight. Our Park and Rec website just went live, like, right now. So if you go to DoylestownPA.org, and click on the Park and Rec button, you can view that. The Park and Rec Committee, along with Karen Sweeney, have been working really hard on this. It is beautiful, it is informative, and I encourage everyone to check it out. And I'm really excited. I think it's, it's been a long time coming, so I'm really excited for the additional information that we're going to be able to pass on to the community. Very easy to navigate, so, well done. It's great.
Thank you. I have something to report. My last meeting with the Pecado, Bucks County Association of Township Officials, Matt Weintraub, District Attorney for Bucks County, joined that meeting. And I have a lot to report, what he said at that, in that meeting. He said that they are not enforcing COVID violations. It's up to the individual township to whether they're going to enforce or not, the COVID declarations. He thinks, he, he reported that crime is down in the county. People are staying home, there's no mischief to get into. He says there's nothing open, just the usual knuckleheads, he used, he called them. One exception, he said, was child abuse. It seems to be on the rise, and they really don't know about it, because there's been, you know, it's child abuse, it's in the house. So if you're a neighbor, if you see something, report it. Child abuse hotline is anonymous, it's 1-800-932-0313. He reported also that Bucks County received $109 million in COVID funding, and the reason why we got that much money is because of our last census. He said we have to, we have to do the census. We are number one in the state, in the, in the, in the US Census reporting. And that if we keep doing that, we're going to get the money that this, this county is entitled to. He said also, civil unrest, because people were pent up for so long, it was a catalyst for everyone getting together following the death of George Floyd. He had 15, he reported, there were 15 different protests throughout the county. All were peaceful, every single one of them. Police were on high alert, that's their job, but there was no conflict that they had to, they had to deal with. He also cautioned against the spread of rumors. Regardless of what your position is, rumors light people up. Social media is, rumors are, are, should not be treated as a potential threat. You should scrutinize them, and do not forward them, do not repeat them. It has no bearing on fact. So he's very, very, very adamant about that. So be scrutinizing of all social media posts, whatever form they come to you in. He says break-ins and vandalisms were isolated, just the usual things. There's, like, while Philadelphia was burning, nothing was happening in Bucks County, except the 15 peaceful protests and assemblies. He says the police are doing a good job. He says the chiefs have taken the heart each department, and they're working with their supervisors, looking at internal departments, and what, where they need to, you know, reform, or revamp. Implicit bias is what's, is the new thing within the departments, they're all looking forward to. There are 39 different policies throughout the 39 different departments in the, in the county, and the chiefs are going to get together and try and make them unified. He said that 11 of the policies are very critical, and all the chiefs are on the same page about these 11 critical policies. There's very, very little provincialism, or parochialism, as I would use the word. One of the things that he also mentioned was this film called Walking While Black. It's designed for, it's designed to make you all uncomfortable. And he said that there were 24 departments that are going to show this film to their, their, their rank and file. I asked Matt if our department was one of them, and he said, you know, I, I expect you to ask that question, you can send me an email afterwards. Of course, our department is going to see this film. Walking While Black, it's an hour long, and it, after which requires three hours of conversation, and it is carefully guided conversation. So that will be happening in our police department. I know one of our residents, Wally Patterson, who's with the Knights of Columbus, they are going to show this film. They don't have a date or place for it yet, and they want to find a facility that's large enough. So we will have that as something that residents, and all of us can watch if we want to, to become informed about that film. But it is going to the police departments in the county. And that was my illuminating, I, I was very illuminated by his, his report to us. Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered most of it there.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Alright, now, public hearing on the Preserve at Burke Farm.
If I may, on October 16 of 2018, the Board of Supervisors approved the conditional use application of Winchester Acquisitions LP, who's developing the property known as the Burke Farm, located at 3727 Bristol Road in the township. Partial number is 9-7-6. One of the conditions of the board's conditional use order was that dwellings would be constructed in accordance with the architectural plans that were submitted at the time at the public hearing. The applicant proposes to revise the architecturals, and therefore requires the board to consider, and if appropriate, grant an amendment to the prior conditional use approval related to the architecturals for the dwellings. In view of the fact that the request was to amend the prior conditional use approval, notice of this hearing was advertised in the intelligence on two occasions, on July 6th, and again on July 13th. So the appropriate advertising has been accomplished. Since it's a public hearing, the board needs to conduct a public hearing, and obviously, Mr. Cannavan is here to provide to you what proposed changes that he wants you to consider.
Sir, do you care to offer your own testimony, or anybody else's?
I will be testifying for myself.
Thank you.
I believe we can accomplish this rather quickly. On the board to my left is the plan that was presented at the conditional use hearing, generally consistent with the plan that is on your screen, except the coloration of the siding is different. We have swapped out in the, what would be the first floor master suite unit here, rather than having a, a cedar shake shingle design, there's board and batten with a, a new dormer-style window above it, rather than the A. And otherwise, with the same stone as shown below, we have added some detailing above the garage doors also. I think we've just dressed them up further than what we had originally intended, and just changed some coloration. But we wanted to make sure the board was comfortable with them before we moved forward.
I think it looks really nice.
Yeah, anybody?
Thank you.
The appropriate motion would be to amend the conditional use decided on October 16, 2018, so as to change the architecturals to those submitted by the applicant at tonight's here.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that motion, Stephanie?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next. I want to make sure I'm in the right place. Okay. Unfinished business, proposed Juneteenth resolution from 6/16/20.
This was presented at your last meeting. It came late that day, but we have put it in our format, and it's here for your consideration.
I think it's obsolete now. Want to put it off to next year?
I would like to put it before us with an amendment to the date for next year, so we can get it done with at this point.
I think it would be appropriate to bring it up next year. Okay. I think the-
I think the board will entertain a motion to table this until 2021.
I don't, I don't see a problem with doing it now in preparation for next year, personally.
Well, I don't like to do this, like, a rule against perpetuities. I don't want to hamstring what might be going on next year by doing something today. See what happens next year. May not be something that you want to do next year. Maybe you do, but it's appropriate that we do, you would pass on this motion, I think, on June, before June 19, 2021.
You could put it on your reorganization meeting, and that's a possibility.
Keep it, keep it light there, keep it alive there.
So, the harm in doing it now is that you don't want to hamstring us next year, the same board?
It's passing a resolution that won't have any effect until 2021. I don't think that is good procedure.
Can I, can I ask a question? When it comes to resolutions, do we do them for other events? Like, you know, what are our, what is, what's the precedent with the township?
It's usually something that's current.
Current, and then we're going to act upon, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's usually something, yeah, something that we're seeking our opinion on and our support for, so.
Okay, and I would prefer to table it personally and then probably look at the verbiage that's used and how it's described, because I, I did do some reading in comparison in terms of what was out through Congress. And I think maybe, I would like to understand how some of the verbiage would apply directly to the township. So, I think that would be probably appropriate. So, I think tabling it and making sure it makes, since it's an action we can't now do, would be how I would lean.
All right, there's a motion to table. I'll make the motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Nays?
Aye.
Two nays? Okay, thank you. All right, summary of the bank loan. We had long awaited this, and it was important, Ken Wallace. Does anyone want to speak to this? Are we going to just, like, look at it and make a decision?
No, we have Jamie on Zoom.
Oh, Jamie, hi.
If you fit your Zoom cameras. Hi, Jamie, hopefully you can.
Didn't know you were here.
Good evening. I just arrived, so this is perfect timing, and I'll screen share, if that's okay, so that you can see my copy of the presentation, although it sounds like you may have a, a copy in, in front of you.
Some of us do, I do.
Yes, Jamie, the entire board has a copy of the thing, so I don't necessarily know you need to screen share unless they can.
That is perfect, because it says I do not have screen sharing permission, so, perfect. So, I will go through this, and I'll, I'll hit the highlights. Feel free to ask any questions, but I am very pleased with the response we got from the bank loan RFP process, and not to steal the thunder, but the bank loan proposal, the best one, beats the bond market, so I would say the bond issue is off the table for, for this discussion. But if you look at page number one of my handout, lower right-hand corner, we are still, you know, pretty much right at all-time low rates, so that was great for, for this particular opportunity and for the process itself. If you look at page two, we're going to spend a little bit of time on this page. So, we got various proposals from seven different banks, and I'm going to start in that top box, which is, is columns one through four. These are the four proposals that we received, where banks offered a fixed interest rate for the entire 25 years. And so, I highlighted the People's Security Bank proposal. They proposed a 2.39% fixed for the entire 25 years, and in that column three, when you take into account their bank fee, that's how we get to the all-in in borrowing rate. They agreed to all of our terms and conditions, the main one being prepayment at any time with no penalty, so that was good. I didn't have any issues with, with them agreeing to what we were asking for. And we'll get to this in a, in a page or so, but I did a little bit of homework on them. They actually bought out Penn Security Bank, and they're located on 325 South Main Street in Doylestown, and they just opened that branch under the name People's Security Bank right before the stay-at-home order was issued. So, right now, you know, they are, are working on getting their drive-through service up and running, but, you know, they have the, the branch right there in, in place of where you may have known Penn Security Bank to reside. So, I highlighted that in yellow, because that's the best fixed rate for the entire term, and that's the only proposal on this entire page, which eliminates 100% of your interest rate risk, and provides you the flexibility in the future because of that prepayment at any time with no penalty, provides you the flexibility to pay it off, you know, and, and wrap it into a bond issue if you wanted to, or, you know, in a worst-case scenario, if you didn't want to wrap it into a bond issue, either because, I'm making this up, but either because you didn't proceed with your next project, or because interest rates were higher when you got to that point. You know, that's what I mean by this, this eliminates 100% of the interest rate risk and gives you the flexibility to do something in the future or do nothing in the future. You know, if you accepted the 2.39%, no one can take that away from you for the entire 25 years unless you want to relinquish it. Then in that next lower box, columns five through 12, this is a summary of all of the proposals we received that have a fixed rate for an initial period of time. In that period of time, the fixed rate's in column six, the, the initial period of time is in column seven, and then they have a rate reset, and they have to list a formula, that's what all those footnotes are down below, and they have to have a cap rate. So, before I get too far into this box, I will point out that you do not see a proposal on here from either TV Bank or Providence Bank, which were banks that, that you had discussions with before. And so, I called them up after the, the due deadline, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if they were submitting a proposal that I hadn't somehow missed it or not received it. And they both, you know, thanked us for the term sheet and indicated that they could not provide a proposal because they could not provide a cap rate. They did not want to take on that amount of interest rate risk. And, you know, I explained to them, it's, it's not us being difficult, it's, it's state law under the Local Government Unit Debt Act that requires a cap rate, because the state does not allow you, as the municipal government, to take on that additional interest rate risk. So, so I just point out that you don't see proposals on here from, from either of those banks, and, you know, that's just their business model. They didn't, weren't able to provide a cap rate, which is required by law for you. So, the two that I highlighted in this section in yellow are from QNB Bank, and the reason I highlighted that one is QNB offered the lowest fixed rate for the longest period of time. So, they proposed a 2 and 1/4% for the first 15 years, after which their rate would reset at footnote number 13, so 80% of the Wall Street Journal Prime, and they offered a cap rate in column nine of 4%. So, the way I sorted all of these proposals is column 10, the all-in borrowing rate, you know, meaning that initial fixed rate, and then, in this case, for, for years 16 through 25, I assumed the 4% cap rate to arrive at that all-in worst-case scenario borrowing rate of a 251 for QNB. And so, you know, again, this, this does not eliminate interest rate risk. I mean, you know, in a worst-case scenario, it would be 4%, but you would have rate resets based on that formula for years 16 through 25. But that's the lowest rate for the longest period of time. And then, as you look further down below, I also highlighted the proposal from First National Bank in yellow, because this is the lowest rate for the shortest period of time, because I kind of wanted to look at the bookends of, of the range of what we got. And so, First National Bank proposed a 1.1%, but only fixed for five years, and then from years six through 25, their footnote four, so their rate would reset at 65% of the Wall Street Journal Prime, and their cap rate's a 4.5%. So, in a worst-case scenario, in column 10, assuming you got the cap rate for years six through 25, their all-in borrowing rates of 313 rounding up slightly. And so, that's how you would, would read this and how we evaluated them. We also put column 11 in there to show you that same all-in borrowing rate, you know, the fixed rate for whatever period of time they proposed. And then, instead of using the cap rate, we used the 15-year historic average just to show you what that looked like as well, because, you know, we've just come off of 15 years of, of really low historic interest rates. But I really think that you need to evaluate this based on, on column 10 and the worst-case scenario. So, that's how I picked the three that we're going to illustrate here in a couple of pages. If you look at page number three, I did a little bit of due diligence on the three banks that, that I just highlighted, and so, you can see where they're headquartered, number of branches that they have, their asset size as of the first quarter of 2020, and their, their closest address to you. So, two, two of them have locations right in Doylestown, and QNB is, is in Perkasy. And then, page four is the most important page that's in here, really. So, what does all this mean? Because we've been talking all along that, you know, it's not just about the interest rate. Page four takes everything into account, cost of issuance, interest rate, cap rates, the whole, the whole nine yards. And so, in, in column one, option one, you'll see the People's Security Bank proposal. We would need approximately a $3,047,000 loan, and that's based on estimated cost of issuance, because we, we don't know the exact legal fees yet. And, and the reason for that is, is your former bond counsel changed firms, and I contacted him, and he's no longer doing this type of work, so he, he was not available to serve as note counsel, is what he'd be called in, in this case, on a bank loan. So, those are estimated cost of issuance that are factored in here for these purposes. This assumes that tonight is more of an informational meeting, and if you were to direct us to proceed with, with one of these bank proposals, that we would come back at your August meeting with the, the legal paperwork in order for you to incur that debt. So, that's why settlement would, would be about September 22. And so, again, under the People's Security, that's the 2.39% fixed for the entire term, and the borrowing rate, including all estimated cost of issuance, is about a 226. And there's no cap rate, because it's a fixed rate for the whole time. And down below in column six, you can see what that debt service would look like. And so, in 2021 calendar year, about $79,000 and change, and then it would level off in the second year at, I'll call that $168,000 a year on average. And really, what we're comparing on this page is the total at the very bottom of each column, because that, that's debt service, you know, worst-case scenario for each of these. And so, option one, all-in debt service would be about $4,112,000 over the life. We would then compare that to option two, which is the First National Bank in Newtown. Again, this is the, the lowest interest rate, the 110, for the shortest period of time, five years. And you can see the all-in rate, including cost of issuance and their cap rate, would be about a 3.02%. And down below in column seven, you can see the first year's payment would be lower, and that's a function of they have the lowest rate, and then you would level off over the remaining life at, I'll call that $186,000 a year. And again, that assumes that 4.5% cap rate, which is the assumption we have to make for this evaluation, because we don't know exactly where the rate will, will reset in, in basically year six through 25 in that option. And then, in option three, that's the QNB Bank proposal, which is the 2 and 1/4% for 15 years, and then it assumes the 4% cap rate for years 16 through 25. And in column eight, you can see that's about a $75,000 payment in, in the upcoming 2021 fiscal year, and then about $170,000 a year each year thereafter, again, assuming that 4% cap rate for years 16 through 25. And then, the last column is the estimated bond issue, and you can see, as I've said all along, the cost of issuance and a bond issue are higher, but normally, the rate is lower and offsets it. That was not the case in, in this instance, which is why we utilize the dual-track process. But you can see the proceeds take into account the higher cost of issuance there, and the, the borrowing rate, including those cost of issuance, is about a 2.88%. And you can see what that looks like down below in column nine. If you, I'm going to pause there for a second, actually. Are there any questions on this page or why I picked the bank loan proposals that I, that I chose for this illustration? I, I think these really kind of are the, the ones that, that I would consider if, if I got to vote, and they do illustrate the, the various ends of the spectrum as far as, as proposals go.
I have no questions. Anybody? No questions? It's pretty clear.
Ask her what our recommendation is.
I, I, what is your recommendation?
Well, again, I, I know you have a lot of things going on in the township, but if, if I got to pick, I would pick the People's Security Bank in option one, because, again, it's the only one that eliminates 100% of the interest rate risk, and you retain the ultimate flexibility that if you decide you want to roll this into something else in a couple of years, fine, you can. If you decide you don't want to roll this into something else in a couple of years, you have your 2.39% locked in, and nobody can take that away from you.
I agree. That's good. Good work. Thank you. Excellent.
You're welcome. So, I, I won't belabor all of this. Like I said, page four, I think, is the most important page. But on page five, you'll see there is a sample motion, because if, if you'd like to follow the timeline I have outlined on page five, which means we come back with a debt-incurring ordinance to your August 18 voting meeting, then I would just need to know now which bank you'd like to proceed with, so that I can work on said paperwork. All of these banks were very gracious. You know, we said in the RFP that they needed to hold their rate and their terms and conditions for 60 days, and, you know, we're going to be pretty close to that 60-day mark. All these banks were very gracious and said they would definitely, you know, hold their rate and, and get to a September 22 settlement. So, that, that was good, too. Everybody's cooperating very nicely.
Well, it's a pleasure of the board to quote my esteemed predecessor, Walt Barry. Does the board want to move on this tonight?
I know the Ways and Means has it on their agenda tomorrow night to discuss the, the information here today, so I don't know if you are interested in having their input on it before we make a motion.
If we, if we moved on this tonight and the Ways and Means says, you're, you're, you know, you're full of it, you shouldn't do it, are we, are we going to create any problem for you?
No. I mean, you're not wed to this. This is not a binding motion. This is just giving me direction, because if I don't get direction until your August 18 meeting, it puts everything back another month, and that might become problematic for the banks to hold their proposals for that long. So, if, if you picked one tonight and then decided after tomorrow night that you wanted to revisit the topic, that's totally at your discretion. I'm not going to take anything to the finish line that, that's not what you want.
Okay, understood. And when is your 60-day timeline? You started with the bank. You said you have 60 days.
It gets us to about September 22.
Okay.
I mean, there's not really a whole extra month in here.
Right.
The, the original timeline, you know, we thought we would take action this evening, but, you know, that's not really possible or prudent, because, you know, you need time to digest this and, and make decisions, and, you know, we don't have a note counsel of record at the moment either, so I wouldn't have been able to bring you that paperwork this evening, anyway.
If we make the motion tonight to move it along.
Yeah, the, the resolution that we're giving her authority to, you know.
Pursue.
Pursue the, whatever option that we want. I, I think it's the People's Security option, and, and then we can, we see how far we get by August 18. And then, the Ways and Means can weigh in tomorrow or not. I suspect they will.
Hmm?
Okay? What do you think, Ryan?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, my choice is the People's Security Bank to, to back.
So, is there a motion that Doylestown Township Board of Supervisor agree, Supervisors agree to move forward with the proposal received from People's Security Bank, has illustrated in option one?
I'll make the presentation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Could I add one further thing, if?
Yeah.
That's okay? Would it be okay if I work with the administration and with your solicitor to determine who note counsel? note counsel might be? And, and that could involve, you know, a competitive process as well, but, you know, we may need note counsel to really bring you that paperwork on August 18th.
They may. I've been accepted before as note counsel. We'll try myself first.
Okay.
That'll be cheaper. Then we'll go out to a competitive process if they're not willing to accept my opinion. I've done it for QNB in the past and others, so.
Okay.
I think we, we'll try that out first. That'll be the least expensive option.
We'll, we'll work with the devil we know. How's that?
I feel really good about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. All right. Good. That's done. That's a lot of work there. Well done. Okay. Land Developments, Tabor Farms Development Agreement.
Yeah, I prepared a development agreement consistent with your approval. Would recommend that board approve the development agreement with Tabor Farms LLC.
Is there a motion? I'm not going to do it myself. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor of approving the development agreement for Tabor Farms LLC?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, no, I can't aye.
You're, you're.
I'm, I'm abstained. I can't vote.
Of course I have it.
Yeah, thank you. So was that four and?
401.
Thank you.
We received a, a request for an extension from John Van Louveney related to the Hammerstein Two Museum Land Development as a result of a staff meeting we had this week, so, or last week. So I would request the board accept the extension offer from Hammerstein Two Museum Land Development. So the deadline is now August 31, 2020.
Okay.
Before we do that, Mr. Garden, is there a reason why we keep doing this month to month? Is that on our side? Like, do they just need more time?
They, they came in last Thursday, was it?
Yes.
And the engineer came, but Mr. Van Louveney didn't have it. It was a calendar. He had some ideas that would, that would deal with driveways that would save trees. So we said, my God, why don't you try to save trees? And he was going to do a sketch and give it to Jeff. So it made sense to explore that before the board went to approve something would require a lot of trees to come down.
Yeah, and my thing is just like, we keep approving them month to month. Like, if they need more time, if we can give them more. If they don't think they need it, then I guess we'll just keep doing this.
That's a product of John Van Louveney. Most people give you like six months, and we tell them, we'll put it on when you're ready, but he just thinks somehow every month is what he wants to do.
That's fine. That's what they want to do.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to, for a new expiration date of August 31, 2020.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a good question, Dan. All right, and now wants to Pebble Ridge Woodbridge Sewer Project, Bucks County Water Sewer Authority requesting payment number 14. Who's speaking to this?
Either one.
All right. We've read this. Any questions?
No, our, the subcommittee approved it.
Okay.
So I, I would make the motion to approve payment.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion for Pebble Ridge Woodbridge Sewer Project, Bucks County Water Sewer, payment number 14? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Amendment to Resolution Number 2205, Real Estate Tax Deadline to July 30, 2020. 2020, I should say. Everyone see the resolution? Do you want to care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to adopt the same date as the county.
That's good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Tax.
Aye. Now we need to see what the, with, what our school district's going to do.
Well, they're not, they're not tied to your deadlines, anyway.
I know. Now there's, and now the governor's going to say that the individual school districts are, can extend their, you know, tax due.
They will not.
They want to.
It won't be coinciding with you.
No, this has nothing to do with them. No, but.
They haven't decided yet, or two.
It's.
Worrying about what they're going to be August 31st.
Yeah. It's going to be district by district.
Yes.
Like, well, it's going to be a nightmare, anyway. Thank you. Next item is the Saferoot School Trail Supplemental Number One, Shady Retreat Road.
This was reviewed by the Bike and Hike Committee this morning, and they're in favor of moving this portion of the project forward. We'll be working with Baker and Gilmore to do some supplemental survey work on the Stonington Farms property where we're getting an easement through there for the bike hike trail. And I would recommend to the board that we approve this supplement.
Okay. And, and the supplement amount is coming from what source?
Um, it's coming from our match for the grant that we have.
So our match has increased?
Yes. Our match has increased by 4,000.
Okay. So where is that coming from?
Um, it'll come out of our offsite.
Okay. Understood? All right. Is there a motion to approve the new contract value? I'll make that motion. Second?
Yeah, I'll second that. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the question? Approving the new contract value for the Shady Retreat Saferoot School Trail?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And the last item before.
And my introduction.
Yeah, I do not.
14 Greenway Drive, I think, is in the gross tract off of Old Dublin Pike. And the owner of the property wanted to install a pool and filed an application with the zoning hearing board for relief from the impervious surface. But the restriction on the extent of the impervious surface is not related to the zoning ordinance, but related to a, a note on the approved subdivision plan because, correct me if I'm right, Sinclair, but the zoning ordinance, they're not in violation of the zoning ordinance, correct? So it only has to do with a note on the plan, which had a restriction on the impervious surface. So therefore, zoning hearing board had no authority, so we've asked counsel to come tonight and talk to the board about it. He's asking the board to agree to waive or to increase the impervious surface. I'm not sure how much, but a certain amount to accommodate the homeowner's pool.
Yes, good evening. My name is George Azarowski. I'm an attorney. I'm here representing Pam and Patrick Shum. Pam is here. Thank you for seeing us tonight. The property, as mentioned, was 14 Greenway Drive. It's in the R2B residential district. The homeowner is proposing to construct a pool. Excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm getting a high sign from the back. You need to speak into the microphone or? Yes. This one? Okay. I have some documents. What's the best way to pass these around with COVID?
We have, we have plans already.
Okay. I have some photographs, if you want to see them.
I think, why don't you just get to the.
Just of it? Sure.
How many, what, what impervious surface ratio do you need? Where is it related to what was on the plan? And does the engineer have a problem with the additional impervious?
So as determined as, and as built after the, the development was built, the as-built for this property showed that we are permitted 6,30234 square feet. That's 6,234 square feet. We are proposing a total impervious after the pool would be built at 7,297 square feet, which would be 26%, actually 26.8% impervious coverage. So basically, the pool and the decking would be 1,157 square feet. So, you know, you're talking about a difference of, you know, roughly that far over the impervious coverage as determined by the as-built. As mentioned, when the plan was approved in 2014, it was, I believe, built eventually by Toll Brothers. And they had notes on the plan determining what's the maximum impervious coverage per lot. When my client bought the property, she hadn't, you know, she had no way of knowing that the as-built was actually done, which changed those figures. So she didn't really know that she couldn't build a pool on her property. There's a pool next door, by the way, on the property next, adjacent to her property. I'm not sure how that one was built. But the bottom line is, we're seeking 1,063 square feet over what's permitted by the township as determined by the as-built. I would put out that, that certain townships handle the pool surface different ways. Your township, and I think engineer, which some do, actually counts the pool surface. So the pool surface in this case is 786 square feet. So really, the decking and the additional decks that we're talking about of actually impervious is 371 square feet. So urging you that this is a diminutemint amount unless the pool fills up and overflows, which is highly unlikely, and that's Noah's here.
Very, very.
We're not talking about a great difference in, as far as impervious coverage than what was permitted originally. I have some pictures. You can see their backyard is plenty big enough. The lot is actually 27,978 square feet. So it's a very large lot in the development, one of the bigger lots there, and it can easily accommodate a pool.
Do you have any issues?
Stephanie and I talked about it this afternoon, and the, if you look at it on an individual basis, based on the zoning district that it is in, it does not, it does not go over the threshold for impervious surface coverage. However, when you're looking at a recent land development, it takes into consideration the whole tract and what the maximum impervious is for the entire tract. So that was determined by the, by zoning, and what they did was they developed their public improvement streets, sidewalks, and then what they perceived to be the square footage per house. And you take that net amount and subtract it from the max allowable for the entire tract, which was 35%, and there was leftover amount. And the way that they handled it was they allotted a certain square footage per lot. Okay? So it, it increased, or it created a max impervious per lot that met the previous intent of the land development. So this, it depends on how you, how you choose to look at it. If you increase, the stormwater management is done based on the maximum impervious coverage. So if it's a de minimis increase here and a de minimis increase here and there, you can run the risk of having quite a bit of increase that is unaccounted for.
That's, just real quickly, I think for, to help clarify, you're saying that there's a pool next door. Were all of these lots changed? Like, technically, none of these lots would qualify.
It depends. So what happens is when the developer develops a lot, a, a development in land development, they'll assume a certain square footage for the house.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Then when you do a plot plan, you actually buy that lot, modifications are made, changes to the houses. Not every house is exactly the same, so you increase or decrease from that base square footage. So you may have some lots that have a bigger house on them, which then reduces what they had left, whereas other houses, other lots may have had a smaller house. Speaking of the pool next door, I don't believe that was done during the time that I've been the engineer, so I don't recall how that would have been handled. Sinclair would know, maybe know better than I do, where they fell in their impervious coverage and, as pertaining to what their max allowable was for land, from land development versus just looking at the zoning. So it is kind of a, it's an interesting circumstance because a lot of these other, you know, say, older homes that aren't part of these newer developments, you're only going to find that lot and look at it on per lot basis in a certain zoning district. And you're going to look at that lot and say, what's their maximum? Because they're usually not going to be part of a, a land development, a recent land development that has some of these stipulations to it. This happens to be a newer development that has these stipulations put into it and approved through a land development. So, you know, I, that's a decision that the board has to make as to whether or not you want to go over those amounts. My recommendation would be is if you're going to go, look at them on a per lot basis, is that you account for all of the increased impervious through stormwater, individual stormwater management. Because if you get 400 square feet here, 500 square feet here, there's 25 lots, you know, you can get pretty much a significant amount of increase in storm, in impervious coverage that is unaccounted for.
How would we do that vis-à-vis this particular homeowner and her request?
Well, we did it with the development off of Sandy Ridge Road years ago, and Mary Lynn, I think Sinclair at the time, set up a overall formula that, and what was allocated, sort of the first person in, you know, they were able to take a larger chunk from the overall calculations. They were fortunate, and, and we had this same kind of situation. The applicant, actually, the land development plan in the site capacity calculations and the stormwater report actually gave each lot an additional 1,916 square feet to use for, you know, increased impervious surface. You know, so I think we're going to have to, you know.
Have you, have you used that somewhere?
No.
No?
So as determined by Sinclair, I believe, there's a document dated June 27.
Talk into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. There's a document dated June 27, 2018 that I think Sinclair put together. At the time the house was built, there was, she added 690 square feet, so it only left 63 square feet available to her, for her use. So, no, she has not used 1,900 square feet, even with the pool. It will be, it would be under that.
No, that's, we'll have to double, I think Jeff needs to double-check your calculations.
Okay.
And I think the big thing is, is that as you go through the process, that Jeff looks at your stormwater, and if you need to make stormwater improvements on the lot, you need to make them to accommodate this extra square footage.
I understand, but if, 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 what I understand, we have on the lot as it is, would be less than the 1,900 square foot I set forth on the development plan. I understand that, how you do this, it seems to me, frankly, that when it's built, it should be designed bigger to allow people to do things like put pools on a 29,000-square-foot lot. It just seems fundamentally unfair to have someone, you know, stuck with 63 square feet to put some impervious coverage on their lot. That's my complaint about the situation, and she would, and my client would have no way of knowing that. I mean, if you look at the record plan, as you properly noted, it's 19, it says 1,900 and I think some square feet per lot, extra impervious coverage. She ended up with, you know, with 690 square feet available to her.
I'm sort of, I'm losing track of numbers here.
Yeah.
Is, Stephanie, did you say that she has an additional 1,900?
I don't.
That she's only used 600, because she has 1,300 she can still use? If that's the case, she has enough for the 1,062 for the pool and the deck.
I don't think Stephanie's saying.
No, I don't. I, I would, that's why I want Jeff to look at those calculations again, because I'm concerned that they've already used a port with, with this addition, the pool and everything, they're going to, they've used some of it previously and as part of this. And the question is, is will they, it looks like they're not going to have much left and be over. That's what I'm, my guess is.
The research needed is such that, again, we're talking about when they, when they develop this, they may have had a certain square foot-sized house, to which they said everybody has this much more. But when you actually get to the design part and you actually build a certain house, it was probably bigger than that, which is where the used portion of that additional was taken up. Again, maybe not, maybe not completely conveyed, however it came to be, I just have to look and see if the 1,000-plus or 1,900-plus square feet that is accounted for possibly per lot as far as stormwater management goes, then that may be correct. That may be that this improvement, while it goes over what was stated as the maximum per lot, does not go over a per lot accountability for stormwater management.
All right.
It's kind of what we're getting at.
So I don't know that we can pass on this tonight based on what I'm hearing, folks?
I think we need some more.
I think we need some more legwork on this, right?
Okay. Can my client say something?
Yes, you may. You have to, you have to go to the microphone. All right. That microphone is fine.
Hi. Thank you for listening. My name is Pam Shum. I live at 14 Greenway Drive. So it's a 25-lot development. When we decided to buy here, we specifically purchased the largest lot specifically because we wanted a pool. And I know this is probably not important to you because you're, I'm sorry, I'm going to get emotional.
No, 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 no. It, it is important to us. No, it is important to us. We want to make sure you're happy with what you have, with what you're going here. No, it is important.
It's like my forever home for my kids, you know?
Of course.
And we paid a lot of extra money for this specific lot.
Of course.
And it's ginormous. Like, there's pictures. And people are like, you can't have a pool? And I'm like, I don't know. And I also like to state that we will pay for the water management. We'll do whatever it takes. And I just don't want it to get buried in numbers and all that stuff. We'll do whatever it takes to get this because this is one of the reasons we bought the house was because we wanted a pool. And it might sound really silly, but I have a four-year-old, a two-year-old that love to swim.
So are you okay? We want to take a little more time to look at these numbers and then maybe next meeting you'll come back with a recommendation?
Yeah, because what I would like to do is if I can...
What would the timing be for that? If we push it back?
Next meeting would be August.
Would it be the next meeting in August? She has to wait another month? How... Well, what else can we do? Wait, Jeff hasn't commented.
I was going to say, unless Jeff can figure out an on-lot stormwater feature that might accommodate if there is any overage on the impervious surface.
Yeah, I mean, I can't... I can't... All I can do is determine what they would have to do stormwater for. I can't, as the township manager, I cannot design that for you.
No, no. But you can at least provide some...
And what I'm hoping to do is maybe resolve some of this confusion tonight and maybe determine that you don't even have to do anything. Okay? That's what my hope is, to get you there and not tell you no.
I'm assuming that we're going to have to do something and we are okay with that? It's just... It's already been a lot of stress.
Sure.
I would suggest the board table the application, but direct the manager and the engineer to determine what these actual square footage of overage is. And if they can meet the threshold on the plan, they don't need to come back. And if they have to come back, see if you can work with somebody on their behalf to offer some alternative stormwater facilities that can accommodate it. Make sense?
Sounds good. Are you okay with that, sir?
That's fine.
Okay. Sorry again. No, you're okay. You're allowed to be emotional. It's your home. All right. So you got your marching orders? Everyone stands while we're... Okay.